I'd like to call to order the work session for October the 11th, 2011. This is unusual time, we're starting at 3:30. And we do have, I think we have a quorum. We need to call the roll, please.
Mr. Miller?
Present.
Mr. Brady?
Present.
Mr. Drummond? Mr. Gallagher? Mr. Schron?
Here.
Ms. Conwell?
Here.
Mr. Jones? Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Ms. Simon? Ms. Conley?
Here.
Mr. Greenspan? Have a quorum.
All right, we have a quorum present. We will proceed. We have today a presentation from Rick Warner, Director of Health and Human Services, regarding the organization, or reorganization of the department. And I would like to turn this meeting over to Mr. Brady, who is Chairman of the Health and Human Services Committee.
Madam Chairperson. We, that is, the Health and Human Services Committee has heard this legislation twice, Ordinance 02-011-0045. And it is the reorganization of the Health and Human Services Department. Essentially, a consolidation of what had formerly been departments into one department, with departments becoming divisions. But after the first presentation, we asked Director Warner to come back to us with before and after charts, so that you can be able to see what things were and what things will be like in the future if we were to support this reorganization. And Mr. Warner has a presentation for the full council to explain how we got here and what it is we're considering.
Note some other members for the record.
For the record, Mr. Greenspan, Mr. Jones, and Ms. Simon have joined the meeting.
So Director Warner, if you'll proceed with the presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, Madam Chair, and members of the council. I'm here to speak to, as Councilman Brady said, Ordinance Number 2011-45, the organization of the Department of Health and Human Services. I'm going to be primarily working off a PowerPoint, which I hope you have in front of you, which is the PowerPoint that we provided to the committee a couple of weeks ago. I just want to make sure everybody has one, so that we're... And as Chairman Brady said, when we first presented to the committee, he asked us to do a little bit of a historical look to show you what the organization looked like before you all took office, and then as a result of the work that was done in 2010 for the transition planning for the county, as well as the mandate to us from the county executive to reorganize, what the new county organization, human service organization, will look like going forward. I will try to get through this PowerPoint in 10 or 15 minutes, and then would be happy to answer any questions that you might have. The first couple of pages just really, I guess, draw attention, and I'm looking at the state law implications page, that for the provision of human services, although we are definitely controlled by the local county government, we also have many mandates that are put on us by both the federal and state government, and in addition to resources that flow from those two governments.
Excuse me, Director. I'm very sorry to interrupt. I wish I had looked at this earlier, because I know we had a discussion earlier. This, these charts are vastly inferior to what was presented to the committee.
Vastly inferior because they're smaller?
Well, in terms of the ability to comprehend them.
To read them.
Is it possible that someone could, well...
We have slightly bigger ones that we made copies of.
Slightly bigger ones?
I'm not sure that they're still...
That would be somewhat helpful, I guess. These were pretty nice, you know?
They were.
In fact, if any other members who weren't on the Health and Human Services Committee would like a copy of the...
Let me also share mine.
Are you okay?
Yeah.
David, you want this?
Sure.
Better? Okay. I'm sorry. Forgive me, but I figure if I can't see it...
I apologize for not bringing over full-size ones for everybody. But is it... So I just want to draw in Slide Number One, and the other disadvantage of these slides is they're not numbered, and I apologize for that as well. It's just to draw attention to the recognition that we are, while we can set lots of local policy, we are also controlled, to a large extent, by decisions, and funding decisions, and regulatory decisions that are made at the, both the state and the federal level. I'm now going over to the third page of the PowerPoint, which is the county charter provision, which vests in the county council the authority to establish a Department of Health and Human Services, and then divisions within that department, and that's what we'll be talking about today. Going over to the fourth slide, and this is where we get into a little bit of history, and as Chairman Brady said, what we tried to do at the committee a couple of weeks ago was to talk about the structure as it existed prior to January 1st of this year, and then what the proposed changes that the county executive is recommending as we move forward. So the snapshot in this organizational chart, if we can call it that, with the Board of County Commissioners at the top, shows you the structure of the county government where human services are concerned at the beginning of January of 2010. That was really when the bell sounded for us to begin the planning for the transition to the new county government, and we were structured in the way that this chart shows. The only distinction is that the Director of Human Services there, that title at that point, was Deputy County Administrator for Health and Human Services. And as you can see on the left side of the chart, we had four operating departments and one planning department. All of the offices and departments on the left-hand side of the page are essentially state-mandated functions that we provide with funding, both from the federal and the state government, as well as local. So you see there the Department of Children and Family Services. The FTE numbers, which is the single number, 857, in the case of the Department of Children and Family Services, and the dollar amounts were those that were budgeted for 2010 for those departments, so we wanted to give you a sense of budget size. You'll see we had a separate and freestanding Cuyahoga Support Enforcement Agency, the Department of Employment and Family Services, which provides public assistance, and the Senior and Adult Services Department, which provided both public benefit services, as well as services to seniors. The Family and Children First Council at the bottom, it was a planning organization where we convened not only our own public systems and our own public agencies, but the Admins Board, Metro Health, the Cleveland Public Schools, the Juvenile Court, the Department of Developmental Disability, the county and city health departments, in order to do planning on behalf of the entire community where Health and Human Services is concerned. On the right-hand side of the page, and again, this is the picture of the Human Services Department in, at the beginning of 2010, you have five independent offices that the commissioners established to address specific needs within the community that didn't fall neatly within any of the mandated agency organizations. So for the first Tapestry System of Care, we had originally received a sizable federal grant to establish the Tapestry Office. It was a program designed to marry together the community-based focused services of settlement houses and community houses in the organizations, with the clinical expertise of child welfare behavioral health agencies such as Belfair, Cleveland Christian Home, Parmadale, et cetera. And what we've done in that Tapestry is to actually weave those two kinds of organizations together to provide services to families who were just about to go into the child welfare system, or the juvenile justice system, to try to keep them as far out of those systems as we can. For a long time, that was entirely federally funded. The commissioners made the decision to move Tapestry onto the Health and Human Service levy for funding, when the six-year federal grant ran out in 2009, and they have since been an important part of the Human Services offerings of the county. The Office of Early Childhood going down the line is, runs the programs that are branded as Invest in Children, including universal pre-K, as well as home visiting, as well as medical home. And it has been an important part of the county Human Services offices since it was established 10 years ago. The next office, the Office of Reentry, you can see is relatively modest-sized, and that office was established when the commissioners, working very closely with Mayor Jackson, determined that the issue of reentering, folks reentering from the criminal justice system back to the greater Cleveland community in Cuyahoga County warranted a more intentional, strategic approach. And so we established the Office of Reentry in late 2008 and early 2009 to address the issues surrounding reentry. The next office we have there is the Office of Homeless Services, which the dollar amount here in the staffing reflects the county investment in that department, or in that office. That office also puts together the annual HUD application that brings well over $20 million into the community for both transitional housing and permanent housing. And so they play an important function, working closely with the City of Cleveland and community providers, to address the entire homelessness continuum, from emergency shelter through transitional housing, through permanent supportive housing and permanent housing. And then finally, we have the Fatherhood Initiative, which was an office of one or one-and-a-half folks who have worked for the last five years on encouraging fathers to be involved with their families, and we've done that through targeted support of specific programs within the community that reach out to fathers. Before we go over to the next chart, which shows the structure largely the same that we just went through as you all took office in January in 2011, I want to just walk through a couple of the processes that happened in 2010, which then, I think, set up the proposed reorganization that we'll be discussing in just a minute, that I'll be discussing in just a minute. As 2010 started, you're aware that the county administrator at the time, and the county commissioners, established a Transition Executive Committee made up of civic and business leaders, as well as Mayor Jackson and Jim McCafferty, as a representative of the county, to plan for the orderly transition of the county from the commissioner-based system to the new county executive and county council. And as part of that work, the Transition Executive Committee established 11 or 12 working groups to look at various parts of the county government, including human services. And so a Transition Work Group on Health and Human Services was established in the late winter and early spring of 2010. It was coordinated by Mayor Louise Madigan and myself from the Office of Health and Human Services, and John Magala and Emily Campbell from the Center for Community Solutions. And it gathered together both county staff, as well as interested volunteers from the community, many of whom represented specific organizations that work with the county or work on human services, to establish some principles or recommendations for the new county government to consider as they began to look at the Human Services Department. And what we have, and I think we did send around in our original email to the committee, and we can get your copies if you don't have, is the summary of those 10 recommendations from the Health and Human Services Working Group. They were very aspirational in substance. They weren't very, they were not terribly specific on budget or structure. They were just trying to establish or reestablish for the new government sort of first principles on what this group of folks, who again comprised both internal county folks, as well as community provider, or community participants, what they thought the Human Services Department at the county should work on. At the same time that this group was doing its work, and they concluded, the working group on Health and Human Services concluded its work late last, the summer of 2010, and I think their recommendations from that work group were packaged together with a whole set of recommendations that I believe you all received, either just prior or just after the election in November of 2010. But at the same time that was going on, the Transition Executive Committee also contracted with an organization called Public Financial Management, or PFM, who had worked with the county on fiscal issues in the past, to look at the entire county government and make recommendations on structure and funding. And so the PFM report, which was called Great Ideas for a Great County, was published or distributed, I think, late last fall, and included a whole section on the Health and Human Services. And in this set of recommendations, there were specific suggestions on consolidating departments and looking at some structural changes in order both to meet the new challenge that we were being faced with in terms of service demand, as well as just to freshen up our look and make sure that we, that our structure was relevant not only to the funding that we had from the state, the federal, and our own local Health and Human Service levy, but also to make sure that we were prepared going forward in an environment for human services that had, you know, significantly less resources than we've had in the past. And please feel free, as I go along, I realize I'm covering a lot of ground relatively quickly to ask any questions that you might have. So now I'm going back to the PowerPoint and referring to the chart that shows the Department of Health and Human Services in January 2011. This does not differ significantly, as you look at it, from the chart showing you the org chart in January of 2010. This is just to show you, this was the Human Services Department as you all took office in early January of 2011. It shows you the authorized FTE counts for each of the departments, as well as their 2011 budget amounts. So these budget amounts and FTEs are different from the previous slide, which showed you those that were authorized for 2010. This is the budget that the commissioners left you for Human Services as they left office, and as you took office in 2011. And so the structure has, remains the same. When the county executive took office and looked at the recommendations, both of the PFM, as well as the Transition Work Group, he authorized Joe Gauntner and I, the Deputy Chief of Staff for Health and Human Services, to begin to make a, to begin to work, to make a recommendation to him, which would then be, obviously is, the ordinance does forwarded to you for your consideration, for the structure of the department going forward. And so what you have on the next slide, which says Proposed Department of Health and Human Services, September 2011, you have the, an org chart which attempts in very high-level fashion to encompass what's in the Ordinance 0045. So I will take some time to walk through the changes within the departments, as you see here, and then you will see that we have attached org charts for the larger, or really the three large operating departments. So if you have any questions about those...
Before you, before you do that, Director. We had, as I said, two hearings. There were quite a few questions, particularly in the second hearing, and also Councilman Miller was in attendance as well. I just wanted to encourage the council members, whether they were at that hearing or not, if they have any broader, any broad questions to ask the Director at this time, before he goes sort of into the weeds here. This would be, you know, this would be a good time to, I think, if you've got some broad questions before he...
Just real quick, Mr. Chairman. Yes, you went through the establishment of, on slide, the January 2010 of the five groups, but you didn't, maybe I missed it, the Office of Homeless Services, when that was established, and the Fatherhood Initiative, when those two were established, the other ones I picked up as you were going through?
Oh, sure. Madam Chair, to the councilmen, the Office of Homeless Services, I believe, was established in 1993 as a joint coordinating body between the City of Cleveland and the county. The Fatherhood Initiative, I believe, was established in 2002 or 2003, in that timeframe.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Proceed, Director.
Okay. So again, I'm now drawing your attention to the Proposed Department of Health and Human Services for September of 2011. You'll see the county executive at the top, and then the Director of Human Services, and that's the office that I'm in, which is, as you'll see, the Office of Health and Human Services. That is the coordinating office for the work that is done in all of the departments. It's relatively small. You will see that, we note that up until this proposed reorganization, we have had a number of staff in the Office of Health and Human Services who have actually been functionally directed by the, either the Human Resources Department, or the Office of Purchasing and Diversity, because we were able to use federal and state funding, excuse me, to pay for a portion of their staff costs by having them on the Human Services org chart. There really are two ways for us to recover money that is legitimately, or to cover expenses legitimately, when we are using folks for health and human service purposes. One is to have them, as we previously had, have these HR folks, or the folks from Office of Procurement and Diversity, directly on our payroll, although they were accountable to their respective departments. This allowed us, again, to access funding from federal and state sources to cover a portion of their salaries. The other way that we can do it is essentially the way we propose to do it going forward, and that is to align those FTEs from, primarily from Human Resources and OPD within their departments, have them paid by their departments out of the county's general fund, and then a charge-back system be established, like exists currently with Central Services or Public Works, for space maintenance charges, or for the ISC, for information technology services. And so we have recommended, as part of this recommendation, as part of this reorganization, that we align those staff within their budgets, and then we, within their respective organizations, and then we pay for their services through a charge-back process. So if you looked at the Office of Health and Human Services prior to this reorganization, you would see that we're probably closer to 30 staff members. That's because we have 10 or 12 folks within the department who are directly accountable to Human Resources, and another couple that are, that do the work of Human Services in the Office of Procurement and Diversity. Going now down to the significant changes that you'll see in the operating departments, and again, we've aligned this, so the mandated services essentially that we provide are on the left-hand side of the page, and the more discretionary, or the county-based mandates are on the right-hand side of the page. We start with the Department of Children and Family Services. It remains like it was in the earlier slides, with the same staff and the same mandates. What we've done, though, to, we think, streamline our approach to working with children and families, is to recommend the movement of the Tapestry Office into the Department of Children and Family Services. Many of the providers that you heard me reference earlier, when I described what Tapestry does, are providers with whom, or with which, the DCFS currently works, and it made most sense for Tapestry to become part of the Department of Children and Family Services. It's a relatively small change, in the sense, I think Tapestry has 12 or 13 staff, but it does get the sort of philosophical approach of Tapestry, which is to meet families on a prevention model as early as we can in the process, so hopefully they do not go deeper into either the child welfare system, or the juvenile justice system. Tapestry serves a mix of juvenile court and DCFS families, and we have worked with the juvenile court to make sure that they're comfortable with the fact that this organization is now part of the Department of Children and Family Services, and so far, Judge O'Malley and his colleagues have been completely supportive of that transition, and they intend to continue to contract with and use Tapestry for the services that it provides. I'm now going to go and talk about really the biggest set of changes, because they affect the Department of Employment and Family Services. The first major shift that we did, that were part of the recommendations, was to take the Medicaid Benefits Unit, which was, which has been part of the Department of Senior and Adult Services, that reaches out to single adults, for them to get access to Medicaid benefits and food stamp benefits, and to move that group of employees into the Department of Employment and Family Services, where similar work is done for a very broad population of recipients. In fact, actually, the Medicaid Benefits Unit that was part of the Senior and Adult Services Department back in an earlier reorganization was moved from the predecessor of Employment and Family Services to DSAS, because we wanted to provide a senior-facing organization to make sure that we were meeting the needs of seniors in the community. We still feel that that's very important, and that's why the Department of Senior and Adult Services remains, but the Medicaid benefits, the benefits piece of it, we need, we believe that we need to have back in the Department of Employment and Family Services in order, frankly, for us to manage the demands for service that we're getting. This gives us access to more caseworkers, to spread the work more evenly across all benefits groups. And it's a staff of about 60 that are making the move from Senior and Adult Services over to Employment and Family Services. But again, the kind of work that they do will not change, it's only the structure above them that will change. The second, and really the largest, piece of the reorganization that affects Employment and Family Services is that we are moving the Cuyahoga Support Enforcement Agency, the Child Support Agency, underneath Employment and Family Services, so that CISA becomes a wholly-owned subsidiary, if you will, of Employment and Family Services. And while the work that CISA does is separate and distinct from the work that Employment and Family Services does, and will continue to be distinct in the sense that child support workers will continue to do child support work, Employment and Family Services workers will continue to do public assistance work, we think that there are opportunities for merging some of the back-office functions, fiscal, contract, HR, other IT, other kinds of back-office services that have little to do with, at least what most customers see in terms of their service, but we think we can achieve some efficiencies that way. So if you go back to an earlier slide, and you see that Employment and Family Services prior to these changes had 720 FTEs, you'll see that with the addition of both the Medicaid Benefits Unit from DSAS, as well as the Child Support Enforcement Agency, Employment and Family Services becomes by far the largest health and human service organization. But we think it is a, essentially a family income organization, if you want to think of it that way, both in terms of the Medicaid, food stamp, cash assistance, childcare, public assistance that we provide to families, and the benefits that are administered by our overseeing the child welfare, I'm sorry, the Child Support Enforcement Department. We think that those are analogous kinds of services, which can be best managed and most efficiently managed if they're combined. And so that is the largest change that we're proposing as a result of this reorganization. Continuing, though, to go down that same part of the page, you'll see that what remains for the Senior and Adult Services Department without the Medicaid Benefits Unit are still very important pieces of our work with the senior community. One, and most specifically, and the most importantly, is the Adult Protective Service function, which is essentially the adult version of 696 kids, so social workers who answer calls and address issues of elder abuse. That function continues to be done by the Department of Senior and Adult Services. The other pieces within that department are our home healthcare organizations. We have close to 100 home healthcare aides who work with seniors and other adults in the community, providing in-home care services for them, and that work will continue within that department. And then the last piece of, the major piece of that department are our Senior Office of Senior Services, the Medicaid, Medicaid, I'm sorry, the Benefits Checkup Unit that helps seniors and other adults in the community identify benefits that they are eligible for, as well as outreach folks to the senior community. So they, if you look at the Department of Senior and Adult Services, at the beginning of 2011, we had 250 employees. We are now at 180, and that essentially reflects the movement of the Medicaid benefits from DSAS to Employment and Family Services. Going over to the right-hand side of the page, there you'll also see some changes. While the Family and Children First Council, the Office of Early Childhood, the Reentry Office, and the Homeless Services Office remain independent from the clientele and the target population that they face, we are beginning to bring together their back-office functions, again, so that fiscal, contracting, communications can be done in a much more coordinated fashion, and hopefully with fewer FTEs ultimately. What has disappeared from that side of the chart is the Fatherhood Office, which, again, has a small staff, but we made the decision and made the recommendation to the county executive that we move Fatherhood over to underneath the Child Support Enforcement Agency. And so Al Grimes and his assistant will be moving over there, or they're actually in the process of moving over there right now. While there was a little bit of controversy as to whether or not Child Support Enforcement Agency was the right place for a fatherhood program, who serves in part sometimes fathers who are reluctant to get engaged with the Child Support Enforcement process, we felt like it was the best place to house fatherhood. Most of the work that we do in fatherhood is outward-facing, in the sense of contracts with organizations that provide services, and we wanted to make sure that the work of CISA was aligned with the work that is done in fatherhood. And so we made the decision to make the recommendation to the county executive that Fatherhood become part of CISA. That is, in a nutshell, the major changes that we made as a result of the reorganization. The next three slides, which, if you have a large enough piece of paper in front of you, you can see what we've given you is the high-level organizational chart for the three operating departments. And so if you look at the first slide, you see the Department of, I'm sorry, the Division of Children and Family Services. Essentially, the only change made there, if you look in the middle column, on the right-hand side, you will see that we moved the Tapestry Program into DCFS. The next department, Employment and Family Services, has the most significant changes, so you see the direct service portion of CISA on the left-hand side of the page, and then you see in other parts of the organization where we have attempted to begin to merge the back-office functions of CISA into the back-office functions of Employment and Family Services. You also see that, that if you drilled down farther, you would see that the DSAS Medicaid Benefits Unit, their staff is interspersed with the other staff doing benefits work at the Department of Employment and Family Services. And then over to the last page, the Department of Senior and Adult Services, you will see that its organizational chart remains very much similar to what it was before, with the exception of taking out the Medicaid Benefits Unit. So Madam Chair, and Mr. Chairman, that concludes my short summary, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Director, and I'm sure we'll have some questions. I wanted to be, I, this reorganization I thought was significant enough, that I wanted the entire council to at least have the benefit of a presentation by the Director, rather than it just show up on the... than it just show up on the, on the agenda. And there's, this has been, as the Director said, a long process. It started before probably many of us even decided to run for these offices and this is the conclusion of them and this is a work in progress. This is already actually in progress. And if I could just ask the first question and then, David, do you have a question? Then Councilman Greenspan second and we'll move on down. The, now I've forgotten my question. Councilman Greenspan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to, this isn't so much directed towards you as it is more of an overall question for how the County Executive is going to consolidate and collaborate all these agencies. I see where you've got, looks like six people who are involved in information technology. Explain the relationship between that and Director Maury's agency.
Madam Chair to the Councilmen, I would say that as Chairman Brady just said, that a lot of this is still a work in progress. I think the IT function is to, actually just, just last week Jeff Maury was meeting with some of the senior folks from the County Human Service IT to begin to think through how we can best structure information technology services to the departments, to the human service departments and divisions to make the most economic as well as customer service sense. As you may recall from other discussions that we've had, we are burdened to some degree in the Human Services Department by having different computer systems mandated to us by the state in the Department of Children and Family Services, the Child Support Enforcement Agency, Employment and Family Services, and even, even smaller offices like Homeless Services. And so one of the challenges I think for the IT folks is going to be how to approach those issues because a lot of the, of the fixes that we're seeking are beyond our ability to make those. They exist in Columbus sometimes and sometimes even in, in Washington. But Jeff has engaged us, Mr. Maury's engaged us in a discussion of how we best structure our IT and in fact it may become, it could well become his IT to some degree and we would be his customer. That's not unlike we've been talking about doing with the HR Department, which is essentially for us to pay for the services that we, that we require from the IT department, but to allow IT to be centralized in a, in a more thoughtful way. And I think those discussions continue. You, you could well see in a future org chart, though to your question, that some of the IT people, they'll still maybe show up on our org chart because they are important pieces of what we do, but it might be a dotted line to us and a bright line or a direct line to Mr. Maury and his, and his staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A follow-up to that. So is it your expectation that at some point in the future, maybe not in 2012, but that the IT function will become, you will become a client of, possibly of the IT department?
Mr. Chairman, the Councilman, yes, that's, that's, I mean, I don't think the County Executive has made the final choices, but I think that that's at least where the conversation appears to be going. And from our perspective, what, what we are looking for and, and Mr. Maury has committed to providing is, is customer service as a customer of the IT department. And any way that we can do that as efficiently as we, we can, we'd welcome the chance to do.
Thank you. Councilman Schron, and then Councilman Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We moved from 10 units down to seven, it looks like, if I'm understanding correctly. So the consolidation of head count was, it was hard for me to pick it up from mine. In 2010, January 11 and September 11. Can you give me those total numbers of what were in the total group of 10 and, and then 10 again in 2011 and now in seven? That would be within your scope.
Sure. Madam Chair to the Councilmen, I, I don't have the exact numbers of FTEs in any of the timeframes that you just suggested other than doing the math right here. What I would, but I-
I tried, but it was just hard to read.
And I, and we, we can get you in follow-up to the answer to that question. You know, we, we are smaller. Frankly, we get smaller to some degree by the month because we continue to lose staff through attrition. Frankly, I think the most, maybe a, the most relevant look at staffing might be to go back two or three years to 2007, 2008 and see where we were. As an example, and I'm not saying this because I believe we need to get back to those levels, but I think it speaks to where we are today. Employment and Family Services, back in the 2008, 2009 timeframe had almost 1,000 employees. They are down now before this change to 720. The Department of Children and Family Services in that same timeframe had close to 1,200 staff. They're now down at 850 or 860. So-
Yeah, I understand that you're, that, to go backwards and pick those numbers up, but it really, in your presentation, you, you only discussed three events. 2010, January 2011-
That's true.
-September of 2011. I'd like to have those three broken down and then correspondingly the dollars that relate to that and the budget in those three.
Okay.
And then ask, was there a target for cost savings? And was there in, in this reorganization plan, which if you're doing a reorg, reorg plan, I would assume that there's got to be a target for head count and a target for cost savings that you were, you were focusing on by, by doing this consolidation from, from 10 down to seven?
Madam Chair to the Councilmen, I will say that, that the County Executive charged us with looking at ways that we could operate most efficiently in the environment that we're in. We did not set out as we did it to get to a arbitrary number of FTEs or an arbitrary budget amount. What we were trying to do was to align the departments with the service demand that we have now and attempt to meet that service demand as best we can by doing the, the reorganization. So we may well have, that, and I'm speaking now about the, the conversations that Joe Goner and I had. We may, we did not start out with a, an attempt to say we're at 2,300 now and we want to be at, you know, 2,000 by the end of the process in terms of FTEs. What we were looking at was we've seen a, a very significant increase in the demand for service, particularly in the public assistance side, and we were finding that the best way for us to meet that need was to reorganize and to try to put more resources to the front line as best we can. But that, that did not include trying to reduce staff at this point because at least to begin with from our perspective, at least for direct services concern, we didn't think we could afford to lose any more folks. But with the, with the prospect of insufficient resources to bring on lots or perhaps any new staff, we knew that we needed to reorganize in order to meet the challenge.
Was there a desire to a consolidation of management and leadership then? If we, if you go from 10 folks leading a group down to only seven, I would assume there has to be-
Right, no-
-some consolidation and cost savings that was targeted there, I would, I would-
Madam Chair to the, to the Councilman, you are, you're exactly right. We are, we are leaning ourselves, slimming ourselves down in, in terms of leadership. So we used to have four unclassified, what we called at the time directors, are now called administrators to run these major systems. We'll be down to three as a result of this reorganization. But again, I, I think that the dollar savings are probably relatively small in this reorganization. But what we think this allows us to do is not to have to ask for additional staff beyond perhaps some for direct service so that we can try to economize on back office functions, functions where we are doing duplicative or the same work in different departments. We can bring them together a little bit more thoughtfully.
But wouldn't these be the most expensive members of the staff?
I would-
So I guess I'm surprised that we wouldn't see some kind of reflection.
Oh, I, I think, I think we will see some savings. I'm just saying, you know, it's not in the, probably in the millions of dollars or in the scores of employees. It's, it's a reduction of eight to 10 to 12 overall. I'm not just talking about the most senior leadership, but probably down through the, through the process, probably 15 or 20, let's say, senior kinds of, of functions, FTEs that we won't, will no longer need. But most of the time, these are probably already vacant positions and we just won't need to replace folks.
To the Chair, could I, get, get the head counts of those three activities?
Yes, Councilman, actually, the Councilman Schron's question got in general, in a general way where I was intending to go. Do you feel need to have more specific information before the, before the vote this evening? Part of what I'm, part of, part of the timing of this reorganization is to, to have it in place so, so that when we begin the budget process, you know, we'll, it'll be clearer to us what it is that we're budgeting and get at a lot of the kind of questions that you're asking.
Yeah, this, this, the concern for me is, is seeing these big numbers that says vacancy with big numbers that are showing open, open slots. And so are we being asked to approve the filling of those open slots and those vacancies ultimately in this total, in which case I would like to really know how many people are there and what are we intending to do as far as, and it, hopefully it's a number that, that should-
I'm not asking for the budget number, I'm just asking for the, the head count. That ought to be something that should be fairly readily viable.
I mean, Madam Chair to the Councilman, this ordinance does not authorize us to hire anybody or not to fill vacancies or to fill vacancies. This, this is what, what we were asked at the, at the second to last Human Services Committee we were, that we were at, where we showed total FTEs. We were also asked to show in the subsequent meeting what the vacancies were and so we did that. We are not suggesting by the chart that we think that as an example, the Department of DCFS necessarily needs to replace 50 people. That wasn't the, the import of this or the intention of this portrayal of us. We were asked to provide the information of what the vacancies were. At the, at the time at which we looked at these, these were funded vacancies, but we're not saying that we are trying to fill them necessarily. And I don't think by passing the ordinance, you won't be authorizing us to, to fill those positions.
And then to the Chair, one last question. It's on Mr. Greenspan's point that if we are going to reclassify the, the IT folks, can we make sure that we're always comparing apples to apples that if the person is, is doing the IT function but is no longer in here, that we don't count them because we've really reorganized them into a different department back in, into IT?
Yeah, I mean, Madam Chair to the Councilman, I, I think that our org charts and our FTE count would then show if we move people over to Mr. Maury's organization, they would no longer show up in ours. We might still be their sole customer and they might be working within our department on a full-time basis, but they would show up on Mr. Maury's payroll and his org chart.
Right.
So, so the numbers would go down. We won't count them twice.
Yeah, just not, it's actually not a loss. It's just a repositioning within the county.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My question is, is when we get the budget presentation, are we going to receive information that's going to enable us to, to separate out what changes in the budget are simply a matter of reorganization and what changes are, relate to actual shifting of, of numbers of dollars and numbers of persons so that we can kind of make some apples-to-apples comparisons?
Madam Chair to the Councilman, yeah, we will make sure that we portray it in a way that, that articulates sort of almost before and after pictures too in that regard so that you understand what new resources a department might be getting as a result of having staff moved over to it as opposed to just basic changes in that department's budget, if I'm understanding your question correctly.
And, and Mr. Chairman, Director, following up on Councilman Schron's plea, I think it would also be very helpful in the budget presentations if we receive information on to what extent the budget is proposing to fill vacant positions and to what extent we're proposing to work with staff levels that are currently existing even though additional positions may have been funded in the current budget.
Okay, we, we'd be happy to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Rogers. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To the Director, I have a question regarding the FTEs that are on the chart. Does that include the vacancies or is, is that without the vacancies?
The, the number that you see on the chart includes fund, what, what we attempted to do is so there are, there are fewer than 827 current staff at DCFS as an example, so we-
It's minus 50.
Right, exactly.
Okay. And currently, are these, with the movement of departments or programs, however they are called, are we moving people into different places? Are they currently, are most of these people in the same building or does this require movement of people to different locations?
Madam Chair to the Councilmen, I can tell you that in the, in the case of Tapestry moving to the Department of Children and Family Services, we physically moved them from a small office over in Prospect into the Virgil, I'm sorry, the, the Chana and Hunter Building where DCFS is headquartered. For the Child Support Enforcement, I'm sorry, for the Employment and Family Services moves, the Child Support Enforcement Agency is largely in the same building as Employment and Family Services, so there'll be no moves as a result. There may be a few staff that move in order to be closer to their new colleagues as an example. The fiscal folks within CISA might end up moving to be closer to the EFS fiscal folks, but they would stay within the same building. The Fatherhood Initiative Office is moving over to the Virgil Lee Brown Building. That's just two folks moving. So I think that's, those are the only, in, in terms of freeing up space, if that's the way you want to think about it, the, the only thing that we really free up in this move is that office that the Tapestry Office occupied on Prospect.
Was that rental space, rerunteering that?
You know, it is the building that the Veteran Services Commission is in and I believe it is leased space, but I'm not 100% sure. I can get you that information.
I had one other question. The Fatherhood Initiative moving under the Child Support Enforcement, what were some of the conversations and what were some of the people that you reached out to? Is there, was there any, I guess gauging of opinion from people that actually used the program on how they would feel about that move?
Madam Chair to the Councilman, I actually had the chance to make a presentation on that part of the reorganization to, I'm not going to get the name quite, but, but the Father Collaborative Organization that Steve Kilpak runs back in the summertime. And we talked at some length there about the pros and cons and, and from my perspective, what led us to make the recommendation and what I think led the County Executive to agree with it. There were questions about it and I think that at least in, as respects some folks, you know, they, they sort of, they're willing to sort of trust and verify or, or they're waiting to see if it, if it, if it works. We, we expect it will. Actually, the, one of the senior management staff at CISA, Mike Falatash, who's going to work most closely with Al Grimes and the Fatherhood, has been probably the most significant fatherhood advocate Mike Falatash has in all of the County Human Services Department. So we think it's a good fit and obviously if we see issues that, or if issues are brought to us either internally or from our outside partners or advocates, we would certainly look at those. But we didn't, I, I have to say when, when I left the room, you know, it, I, I think there was some degree of support for it and, and people were willing to let us try it and see how it worked.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And Director Warner? Have any of these structural changes caused movement in the departments that were in, that are currently in the Mount Pleasant Family Center?
The, there are two departments right now that you, that, that use the space at Mount Pleasant, the Department of Children and Family Services, which acquired the Tapestry Program. That will not affect, they, they won't be adding staff to that particular location because the Tapestry staff is small and will all be located at Chana and Hunter. Employment and Family Services, while it gained, the Child Support Enforcement Agency, again, they're, they're, they're in a single location essentially as far as direct service is concerned. And so that won't affect either organization in terms of their operations at Mount Pleasant.
Structurally, there is no movement from, from the center?
There, as a result of this reorganization, there is no change to the, to, to our use of space for those two departments at, at Mount Pleasant.
My next question really isn't a question, more of a comment. The transition group, I've looked at there, the good work they've done as, as a template and I think we've all looked to use it, use many of the things that have been recommended. One thing that's been recommended here and I just want to highlight it, is that there's a focus, they have recommended a focus on the intersection between economic development and the human services. Between economic development and the human services. And from a big picture way, I think about the fact that the government, we have changed the structure of our county government, but we've also added to the function, which is economic development. So now as we change the structure of the human services, I kind of see in the details, we need to follow through on this particular recommendation and focus on economic development and all the things that are listed in this recommendation from focusing on self-sufficiency- and all the things that are listed in this recommendation from focusing on self-sufficiency, job preparedness, I think of social entrepreneurship and all of these things. Do you have any comments? Can you give us any insight into what went into this recommendation seven?
Madam Chair to the Councilmen, Councilman Jones is referring to recommendation number seven in the Transition Work Group, Human Service Work Group. You're asking me to go back to conversations and discussions that were had in probably the spring and summer of 2010. And I, my recollection and Joe Garner and Mary Louise Mannigan were part of the discussions as well, so they may have a perspective. I think that there was a lot of, it was a very lively discussion within the Transition Working Group about the proper alignment of the human services world and the economic development world. I think there was recognition across everybody who was part of the discussion that they were very much connected. And I think the challenges or the issues that came up in the discussion were from a group of folks within the working group who felt that the human services world had to be seen in addition to being a partner of economic development as still providing a safety net function for those folks whom the human services world serves who will not be at some point able or easily able to transition into sort of unsubsidized kind of employment. And I think that there was a little bit of, there was creative tension in the discussion in the room about that, but I think there was recognition across the room about the fact that the goal of the Human Services Department, to the largest degree possible, should be to equip children, families, seniors to be as independent and self-sufficient as they possibly can. And I think that we've tried to align our programs over many years to that, to that goal, even before the work of the Transition Working Group. But them specifically recognizing it, you know, helps us in terms of reminding us, frankly as staff, that we need to remain focused on the goal of equipping folks to be part of the work world and all that that means for themselves, for their families, for their children, and not necessarily dependent on a county or federal or state program. However, those county, federal, and state programs can be significant resources for families who are trying to better themselves, whether that's through childcare assistance, cash assistance if they need it, food stamps and Medicaid if they're in low-income kinds of jobs. So I don't know that we have the balance right yet within the Human Services Department with respect to looking at economic development, but I think we, you know, we remain open to all the discussions and we are appreciative of the fact that the county executive has included, and I think the council has too, in their economic development plan, elements of human services, particularly childhood, which really lend themselves to being very close to the economic development goals of the county.
Councilman Jerma.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a micro question. I'm looking at the figures from 2010 through the various charts. I see that things are consolidated, numbers are going down, with two exceptions, and it's very small, but the Office of Reentry is doubled and Office of Homeless has gone up by 20%. I'm just wondering, is that a function of the reorganization or is that an expansion of the mission?
Madam Chair to the Councilmen, you were doing your math better than I did. Essentially, what's happened there for Office of Reentry, we haven't added any new staff. What we've done is we've aligned staff who are working full-time on reentry as part of that office budget. So three of the staff members from the Office of Reentry, it's a staff of five now, were actually on my payroll in the Office of Health and Human Services. So we haven't added, I mean, there's no net new staff at the county, but there, but we moved them because we were trying to be more, in the same way that we were talking about with Human Resources and the Office of Procurement and Diversity, we wanted the org charts to reflect where people actually worked and to whom they were accountable. And we thought by having them work in an office but be on somebody else's org chart didn't lend itself to that kind of accountability. I think for the Office of Homeless Services, the addition was a grant-funded evaluation staff person. So I think, I think actually that funding runs next spring, and I think we will lose that person.
Thank you.
Through the Chair to the Director. On the blue chart, all of those, I believe it's one, two, seven of them, are they all housed in different various locations, correct?
You're going to have to help me with the blue chart because I went to a black and white.
I went back to your reorganization.
The proposed reorganization?
Yeah.
And ask me your question one more time, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's, all of those, I guess, light blue blocks.
Right.
Are they different buildings?
Um...
Different locations?
Let me, Department of Children and Family Services is headquartered at Janine and Hunter and then is located at a couple of neighborhood sites. Employment and Family Services is headquartered at Virgil Brown and then a couple of neighborhood sites that it shares with Children and Family Services, as an example, in Mount Pleasant. Senior and Adult Services is headquartered exclusively at the Reserve Square Building in leased space. The Family and Children First Council is in county-owned space. It backs up to where the county garage is on St. Clair and East 18th. The Office of Early Childhood, the Office of Reentry, the Office of Homeless Services, and the office I'm in, the Office of Health and Human Services, are all located in the Courthouse Square Building.
Is that leased space?
That is, we own, the county owns that building.
So you, out of these blocks, you named a couple of leased spaces. So on to Councilman Rogers' point, have you taken a look at, when you're restructuring, can we move those departments in actual county-owned buildings and give up some of that leased space?
Madam Chair to the Councilmen...
As long as it doesn't affect Mount Pleasant.
Yeah, I was going to drop them on...
Before I get my head cut off.
I was going to drop them on Pleasant footnote, but other than, other than that, I know the county executive and the Department of Public Works has engaged a space consultant, a real estate consultant, I think, to look at operations, and we've had the chance in Human Services to meet with those consultants. And we have attempted to describe where we are and how we do business and the value of having, to the extent that we can afford it, some of our services decentralized so that they're in the neighborhoods where we serve families. But, you know, as you all know, in, you know, with your leadership perspectives, frankly, almost, you know, the most effective way for us to be organized would be to have a small human service outlet on every corner because frankly, we have clients and services and needs across the entire county. That's a very inefficient way for us to do business. And so we have to always look at sort of the best balance of convenience for the clients and individuals that we serve and centralization and coordination of the work that we do. So we will continue to try to get it even righter than we had, but we're, you know, we're a willing participant in the space analysis so we can make sure that we're in as, you know, in as efficient spaces from a money standpoint as possible.
Through the Chair to the Director, because one of those buildings, well, I guess my question would be, is there any plan that you know of, of the community buildings that we already have in the, that are in the neighborhood that were closed down due to what you said is inefficiencies?
Madam Chair to the Councilmen, I am not, as I sit here, remembering any buildings that the county owns. We did own a building...
122 St. Clair?
Exactly, exactly. And that building, which was a converted grocery store, I believe, and which we used as a site for Employment and Family Services for many, many years, we just wore the building out, to tell you the truth. And so, and we did not have the capital resources to renovate it or tear it down and build anew, and that's...
We own that, though, correct?
We do. I can't tell you whether we still own it, we did. I don't think, we tried to sell it a couple times, we tried to sell the building and the property a couple times, I think in 2010, and I don't think we got a bid sufficient to be willing to part with it. But I don't know that, as I sit here. Joe, do we, are we still on? Okay.
Could you find that out if we still own that?
Sure.
That sits in my district.
Sure.
Thank you. We've got one more question by Councilman Simon, and then if there are other questions during the council meeting, obviously that would be appropriate. But our guests have begun to arrive from City Hall, so Councilman Simon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair to the Director. In welcoming our guests, I'll be very quick. I just have a quick historical question. What attempts, if any, prior to the new government being put in place were there or if there were to, you know, just quickly, to try to confront the overwhelming, you know, vast nature of our human, health and human service network, to condense it and consolidate? Were there attempts and, you know, was there talk of this before? Was there resistance?
Madam Chair to the Councilmen, I mean, they're, the county has reorganized itself from a human service perspective many times over 30 or 40 years as federal funding has ebbed and flowed and as new demands for service. And frankly, as we looked at for those, from those discretionary offices, when the county government, through the commissioners, identified a new target population or a new area that they thought required county, a county focus. In each case, I think that, you know, you end up organizing for what you understand the challenge to be right now, and you can't necessarily forecast what it's going to be in the future. I think this reorganization that the county executive is recommending is done with as much an eye to the future as we possibly can in trying to make sure that we are organized in a way that we can deliver services even as we don't have what we would, at least the county staff in the departments and myself would probably think of as optimal staffing because we just can't afford optimal staffing. So we have to look at how to provide the best possible customer service with as few staff as possible. And I don't know how else to say that. I mean, we're trying to live within the resources that we've been given by the federal, state, and local government, and I know you all have to wrestle with that in just a couple weeks when you look at the 2012 budget.
Thank you. I'll turn the Chair back over to the council president. Thank you, Director.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, is there any other discussion or miscellaneous business or is there, did anyone sign in for public comment?
No, Madam Chair, no one signed in.
All right, same motion to adjourn the work session. Second, all of them, aye. All right. Introduce our six o'clock meeting, welcome from Cleveland City.